I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public School Districts, Number 39. This is Monday, January 22nd. We are at the McCallian Education Center in Willmet. It's 2018. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you.
And tonight we have Principal Kelly Jackson and the WJHS Student Council to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much for coming.
Yes, I have three representatives from our WJHS Student Council, so they're going to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about their work this year.
I'm Evan Lieber and I'm in the 8th grade at WJHS.
I'm Adam Panzika and I'm also in the 8th grade at WJHS.
Hi, I'm Abby Kanowski. I'm once again an 8th grader on the Student Council at WJHS. The Student Council is made up of 7th and 8th graders who want to be active in promoting school spirit and doing good things for others in our school community. So far this year, we have held a homeroom banner decorating contest where homerooms designed a banner to promote the uniqueness of their homeroom, had a Spirit Week right before winter break, and helped by telling jokes and creating relay games to play during the winter recognition rally. Upcoming events will include an all-school trivia contest and our annual canned food drive. Now please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you all very much. Thanks also for your service as student government at WJHS. The artwork tonight is Eric Wilson's photography students who have provided this artwork behind us. These photographs were digitally edited in class using professional software. District 39 combines a cutting-edge experience in digital photography with a foundation on past history. Photography at WJHS fosters an environment of innovation for students to thrive today and in the future. Photography is a powerful tool of communication and we see its impact in the everyday lives of young people all around the world. And these are beautiful photographs and I hope you'll come up and enjoy them at some point. Next up, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2017 Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2017 Regular and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay, I have a few that you all have seen before, so I'm just going to list them real quick. After the second paragraph under artwork, I would like to add the title "Procedural Notes." Under Financial Presentations A, 2017 Levy, in the last sentence, I'd like to delete the word "among." Under Information Items C4, I'd like to combine the titles Residential A (Residential) and B (Commercial) into one title, Residential and Commercial. And finally, under Action Items B, Adopt the 2017 Levy, in the first sentence of the second paragraph, I would like it to read, Mrs. Kearney noted her opposition to the request to increase the, sorry, by the stated, increase the levy by the stated 4.36%, but supported an increase of 2.88%. Those are my requests, so any objections to those amendments?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
It's all voice vote, so everybody can say what they want. Okay. It is approved. Thank you, by general consent. Public comments. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board. And I want to remind everybody, once again, as I always do, that we are, again, among neighbors and community members, and so we'd like to request that everybody keeps their comments in a collegial manner. We discourage any sort of extraneous noise, boos, yays, anything during the entire meeting. And I also want to remind you that if you come forward, we would like you to state your name, your community of residence, and you will have three minutes to speak during this comment period. So with all of that, do I have anybody who would like to come forward and speak? Come forward. Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Stina Hawkinson and I'm from Willmet. I'd like to speak to you about the proposed adjustment of sectionals and removal of grades from the band program. I'm Stina Hawkinson, I'm a current senior at Nutria. When choosing instruments in 5th grade, I picked the oboe and went through the band program at both WJHS and at Highcrest. I continued to become obsessed with music throughout my high school experience, and I am currently enrolled in Symphonic Wind Ensemble, Symphony Orchestra, Chamber Orchestra, AP Music Theory, and I'm acting as a teacher's assistant for Varsity Wind Ensemble. I am also planning on majoring in oboe performance in my future schooling. That being said, I would not be where I am today without the WJHS Band Program. At WJHS and Highcrest, I was introduced to playing in an ensemble, an experience that cannot possibly be replicated anywhere else. In my own recent experience, band is treated as a curricular class, both at WJHS and at Nutria, which is directly stated on WJHS's website. The existence of grades benefited me by providing structure and motivation to do my best. The quality and high standard that I experienced at WJHS prepared me for the rigor and excellence at Nutria. WJHS is the main feeder school for the Nutria bands, making it an absolute necessity for the Willmet program to be upheld. With Nutria my sophomore year, I was able to tour and perform in Italy. This year, we have planned a trip to play at Carnegie Hall in the spring. These unbelievable opportunities would not be a reality if it were not for the way that WJHS has prepared its students for Nutria. It is a fact that if you decrease the amount of time in sectionals, then the students will not be well-prepared for the Nutria programs. Going from 8th grade at WJHS to being a freshman at Nutria, I felt very prepared for band. This is, again, all due to the WJHS Band Program, specifically the time spent in sectionals to get better as an individual player. Bands and orchestras count towards GPAs at Nutria, so they should be treated more as such at WJHS. The goal of WJHS is to educate its students and ultimately prepare them for Nutria. Why should band be any different? I feel that the amount of time that a class meets should be more important than when it meets. On the, in the board meeting on October 23rd, 2017, when this was first proposed, the time ratio of class time in band versus a math class was taken from a concert week, which is completely unfair. On a regular week, according to the schedule online, band is given the same amount of class time as any other curricular class. Seeing that band is considered a curricular class, I don't understand why this must be an issue. District 39 is a highly sought-after school district in large part because of its excellent teachers. This district does a wonderful job of hiring highly qualified teachers who are experts in their respective fields. We, as students, trust their knowledge, expertise, and guidance, and their input and feedback on this topic is extremely crucial.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, your time is up, so if you want to give a quick conclusion sentence, you're welcome to, but I have to cut you off.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this is really, really important, and please don't take it lightly.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. And I should tell you that if you want to stay for the second public comment period, you would have another minute to speak if you wanted to conclude then, just so you know what our procedure is. Absolutely. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's move along. I believe that brings us to our board reports, and we'll start off with the committee reports. Ms. Schaaf, I believe you have the Facility Development Report.
I do. The Facilities Development Committee meeting was held Monday, January 8th, 2018, as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting here at the MEC. The committee received a short update from STR Architect Colby Lewis about the Highcrest renovation project. He reported that the project and drawings are on track to go out for bid January 24th and then for board approval at the February Board of Education meeting. Additionally, the project manager reported that project costs are budgeting out within the range of our budget, so that's good news. The next Facilities Development Committee meeting will be held here at the MEC on February 14th at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. And now we have school finance from Mr. Panzika.
The Finance Committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole on January 8th. Under the topic of financial analysis, the discussion focused on a deeper dive of where we spend our revenue. Mrs. Buscemi gave a summary of individual funds from 2012, the year after the referendum, through 2017. She noted the Educational Fund, which is composed primarily of salaries and benefits, accounted for $5.8 million of the total $6.6 million over this time period. Several line items, expense line items were examined in more depth. Lengthy discussions on appropriate comparables and strategies for a more detailed analysis were considered. A suggestion for an outside fiscal group to do an analysis was discussed. A detailed discussion on reserve targets brought suggestions for addressing increasing risk of revenue disruption or loss and how a reserve target needs to reflect this risk. Suggestions for identifying a minimum target and possibly enumerating a maximum was discussed. This discussion will continue in the next meeting. The committee supported renewing the contract of Klein Hall Associates to do our audit for another year. They met our needs, do a professional job, and offer continuity going into the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Panzika. And now Ms. Schaaf, I believe you have Strategy.
So the Strategy Committee meeting was also held here on Monday, January 8th, as a part of the Committee of the Whole. There were three topics that were discussed primarily at the meeting. First, kindergarten enrichment. Last month, if you remember, the committee reviewed the first step in evaluating a kindergarten enrichment program for the district. It involved a review of the space needs for all four elementary schools and presented initial ideas for renovation and additions that would be needed to accommodate a kindergarten enrichment program. As a second step, at the January Strategy Meeting, Ellen Crispino reviewed estimates of operating costs for the program. The committee discussed total estimated costs for both construction and ongoing operating costs, and then how much of the costs, of these costs could be covered by tuition. With tuition covering approximately 2/3 of the cost, the payback looks to be approximately 10 years. Discussion ensued about construction plans at the schools, redefining classroom spaces, and the potential for increasing enrollments for the enrichment program. The members, committee members talked about the capital projects calendar and the potential projects that might be eliminated if there was a big push for the enrichment program. The next step is to construct and conduct a survey for parents to see what the level of interest is for the kindergarten enrichment program in District 39. So more information is to come as the research continues on this topic. Second topic of discussion in the Strategy Committee meeting was instrumental music. Ms. Lee reported that she had very preliminary results of the instrumental music survey that was sent to grades 5th through 8th parents. The scope of the survey was to find out who preferred a before-school program or related arts option and what parents thought of the current sectionals practice. The committee had some preliminary discussion about the results, but because the results were not thoroughly analyzed, the discussion will resume at the next Committee of the Whole meeting. The third topic was student growth. Ms. Lee presented some of the advantages of the new MAP assessment, which will help us evaluate student growth. She added that the new MAP assessment provides a report in the form needed that has the ability to identify students in four categories. Those are low achievement with low growth, low achievement with high growth, high achievement with low growth, and high achievement with high growth. She explained to committee members the four quadrants and how students are identified, noting that this is exactly the format the district needs to start a discussion on student growth. The next steps are to use this information for teacher investigation on data tools and to develop instruction to improve classroom performance, and she noted the winter assessment results would arrive in late January, and she would have more information to report at the February Board of Education meeting. Finally, Dr. Lechner discussed briefly a couple future topics which we may want to consider studying. Those are nutrition and gender. The next Strategy Committee meeting is February 14th, 8:00 a.m. here at the MEC.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our Liaison Committee meetings. And once again, Ms. Schaaf, you have CRC.
Right. The CRC meeting was held on Monday, January 8th. It was a very busy day for school-related activities and meetings. It was at 7:00 p.m. here at the MEC. The focus of this year's study is personalized learning, and the meeting was primarily a working meeting for the various committees of the CRC. The next meeting is Monday, February 5th at 7:00 p.m. here.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Stern Oiler, I believe you have Education Foundation.
The Education Foundation met this past Wednesday. They've just begun planning for their future board and discussed the term for board members is a three-year term. You can serve up to two terms. I wanted to say that the work that the Education Foundation does is extremely valuable work, so I wanted to recommend that anyone who's looking to get involved in something, consider reaching out to the Board Chair, Lizel Brown, to get more information about their, becoming one of their board members, because they're just starting to look for that now. They were, they discussed at length board responsibilities and the responsibility of their liaisons. And happy to report that Trivia Night sold out immediately. But they are still in the process of pulling together some raffle prizes to make the evening greater success, so anyone who has a local business or service who'd like to donate prizes, I think there's still time. So I think you could contact Rebecca Lieber if you have any more donations to get in just under the, just in time for the Trivia Night. They also reviewed some of the foundation's fundraising history, different types of events they have organized each year to fund their group grants. And in an effort to keep things fresh and generate continued support and participation, they've decided to change gears this spring and try something new. The Spring Fundraiser Event they have decided on will be a paddle tennis event and will include participants of all abilities. Sounds like a lot of fun, and I'm sure with this group organizing it, it will be a great success again. There were, there was a discussion regarding potential topics and presenters for math in the real world, and at the moment, there's not much going on to report, to report ongoing in regards to the Spring Grip Grants. And that is the report for now.
Okay. Thank you very much. No, we're all good. Thank you very much for all of those reports. And last, we have the Legislative Update from Ms. Kearney.
Okay, thank you. Actually, a very short one, in that the legislature has not convened and will not convene again until January 20, or 30th. The big news out there is though, I'll just rule this off. According to the new state funding legislation in regards to education funding, Senate Bill 1947, currently, school districts are receiving their base minimum funding, which, in other words, is the same amount that they received last year. However, there, we're now into the third quarter of the school year, and school districts have yet to receive any new tier funding. Is that correct? ISB has said that the new funding should start sometime in the spring, and they cutely put this, but that's the $350 million question, because that's pretty much what the budget's short. The governor, the big talk too now is how the governor had an mandatory veto. I'm not entirely clear, I'm clear on what he did veto, but how it will affect the entire funding bill at this point. To bring it down into just regular terms and words, as many of you know, there's a $75 million scholarship fund that was started within this, this funding, this education bill, where individuals, corporations, companies, et cetera, individuals can donate to this and get tax credits, or, and get a write-off, and children who meet the standards, which at this point are those less wealthy, can go to private schools and receive tax credits. Well, the private school, that's the issue, that's the part that he's vetoed, is the private schools that were okayed in the original bill were, what's the best word? Received recognition from ISB. And to receive recognition from ISB, that means they for sure follow the Illinois standards. The governor believes that schools that are registered with ISB should also be included, private schools. And the difference, the biggest difference I can tell between these two, the registered means schools submit plans to follow curriculum standards, but they're not obliged to do so. And schools that are recognized do align, their curriculum does align with state standards and are subject to health and safety checks that are done by ISB investigators from time to time. So that's the big upheaval right now. The, when the General Assembly does get back into session in January, on January 30th, they have three options in response to this mandatory veto. One, they can accept the changes by a simple majority vote. Two, they can override the changes with a 3/5 majority vote, or they cannot act at all and the bill dies. So that's it for now.
Great, thank you very much. And that brings us to Information Items. Dr. Lechner, would you like to take a second?
Yes, we'll begin with written communication. The board received written communication regarding the tax levy from Tracy Summer, Ted Dabrowski, Art Gunther, Julie Hannahan, Scott Poole, Karen Goodman, Jennifer Manning, and Eve Williams. We also received written communication regarding the 2018-19 school calendar year from Avita Vulgaris. Next, we have administrative announcements. I'm going to begin with interim appointments. This year, we have two administrators retiring. We sincerely appreciate the dedication given to District 39 from Dr. Denise Thrasher and Gail Buscemi. Their departure leaves notable vacancies among the administrative team. I will say that District 39 has a longstanding succession planning model that assures a smooth transition. And this evening, I'm proud to announce two interim appointments for 2018-19, Dr. Romi Cristofaro and Ellen Crispino. Dr. Cristofaro, we're going to start with you first. She's worked in the field of special education for 15 years. She came to District 39 11 years ago as a learning behavior specialist at Central School. She was soon promoted to Special Education Coordinator, and then, since then, she's been serving as the District 39 Assistant Director of Student and Special Services. She earned two master's degrees from Northern Illinois University, one in special education and the second one in educational leadership. In 2016, Dr. Cristofaro earned a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction from University of Illinois at Chicago.
I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Lechner for this incredible opportunity, and I'd also like to thank Dr. Denise Thrasher for being such a wonderful support and mentor to me. I know I have big shoes to fill. With that said, I am extremely honored and excited to move into this role, and I hope to continue and build on the great work that Denise has accomplished over the past 10 years in supporting our teachers, partnering with our families, and ensuring exceptional services for our students. So, thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ellen Crispino. She's served as our Controller in District 39. This is her fifth year in that position. She's been responsible for accounting operations and financial reporting, where she streamlined many of the district's business functions. She also played a key role in developing and managing the district's annual budgets. Prior to coming to Willmet, she's had more than 13 years of experience as a controller for several technology companies, where she was responsible for accounting and financial operations. Welcome, Ellen.
I would like to thank the board and Dr. Lechner for this opportunity. Both of my sons went through District 39 and received a fantastic education here, so I'm very excited about the opportunity to give back to the district in this new capacity. I'd also like to thank Gail Buscemi for all of her support and encouragement, and I look forward to working with you all more closely in the months to come. Thank you.
And I have to say, I missed a paragraph. I read the second one first. I want to add a few more things. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from Washington University in St. Louis and an MBA from Boston University. She recently received her Chief Business School official endorsement from Northern Illinois University in conjunction with the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. Now I'm complete, thank you.
And I will just say, on behalf of the board, Dr. Cristofaro and Ms. Crispino, we're very happy to have you here, and we're looking forward. And of course, we'll say more later, but Ms. Buscemi and Dr. Thrasher, we are sorry to see you go, but...
Next, we'll talk about the League of Women Voters Student and Government Leaders Program. For over 40 years, junior high 8th graders have participated in the League of Women Voters Student and Government Leaders Program. We've held the kickoff last Thursday evening at Willmet Junior High School. In this program, students learn about local government and civil service. Students are assigned to an elected official or a school administrator to work with. This person could be a village trustee, a school board member, or a District 39 administrator. The entire program culminates with a mock board meeting where students demonstrate their knowledge on current issues and debate the merits of each topic that will be selected. The mock board meetings will be televised in March. Next, I want to talk about our annual 4th to 5th grade transition. This is the first steps that we're taking right now as we prepare for our 4th graders to go to Highcrest. This preparation is well underway. I'm going to first start that our transition actually began in kindergarten enrollment that opened last week. We're gearing up for our 4th to 5th grade transition next. The week of January 29th, 4th grade students will view a video in Spanish class that previews course options that they will have at Highcrest. The five world language classes will be highlighted along with academic strategies and WIN, which stands for What I Need. Academic strategies and WIN are courses for students needing academic support. These options would be an alternative to world language or related arts. In the past, these two classes were not included in the video. However, they too are meaningful options for students. As a result, the video has been updated to include all options available to students. After that takes place, we're going to be seeking feedback from parents, teachers, and students to evaluate the impact of this change. Next, we have FOIA. The district received a FOIA from Emmanuel Hernandez of Parents' Foundation for Education requesting the name, position, grade level, certifications, licenses, addresses, emails, phone numbers, gender, race, ethnicity, hire date, years of experience, and current salary for District 39 teachers and staff. And that is the end of announcements.
Great. And I think next item is strategic plan updates, which means you're right back on the...
Yes, I am. In October, the board approved the 2017-18 strategic plan for District 39. Tonight, you're going to get an executive summary that's merely a touchstone. We're merely presenting you mid-year updates and action steps that we've taken so far. A more complete and final report will be presented in June. Katie Lee will introduce this report with the administrative team.
Good evening. On behalf of all District 39 administrators, Sue Kik, Kelly Jackson, Romi de Cristofaro, and I, we'll be sharing some mid-year updates on the continuing strategic initiatives and annual business tonight. So we will begin with school climate. District 39 continues to engage students, staff, and parents in learning about diversity and nurturing a more inclusive school community. Earlier this fall, District 39 reviewed, revised, and adopted a statement of inclusion, which was collaboratively created by District 39 administrators, teachers, board members, and Community Review Committee members. It's displayed on the District 39 website under the mission statement. And on November 7th, we partnered with Family Student Services to offer two parent education events on navigating social conflicts. Parents of grades early childhood through 4th grade heard Dr. Rene Dominguez and her team address the difference between social conflict and bullying, and how parents can support children in navigating these situations. Parents of grades 5 through 8 students heard similar messages with the added topic of how the tween years have become increasingly complex, social arenas due to social media. Our schools have developed ways to promote respect and celebrate differences, and Principals Sue Kik and Kelly Jackson will share a few examples with you.
Harper students made an impact when celebrating differences and noting that we are all more alike than different. In the student letter... In the student let assembly, HMS students worked alongside Harper students to answer questions from the peer audience. Some good questions that students asked included, "Sometimes I can't understand what you said. What should I do?" Or, "Why do you flap your arms? Can I help you with that?" Diversity is taught in many ways at all of the elementary schools. One example comes just recently from studying the celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. Students not only learned about the dreams of Martin Luther King Jr., but thought about their own dreams. This comment was right on the money and says that people won't fight, but will talk out problems. Don't we wish that would happen? Each school's libraries provide access to books that celebrate differences, diversity, and culture. The books are not only found in our larger library collections, but also in classroom collections. A few examples are shown on this slide. We challenge students to read without walls, which means to read a book about a character who doesn't look or live like you, or read a book about a topic you don't know much about, or read a book in a format that you don't normally use. So for example, an audiobook instead of a paper book. Students discussed how no one's skin is paper white or pure black. We are all beautiful mixture of hues. In these portraits that were created by students, they blended a variety of tempera paints, learned about different skin tones to celebrate our unique identities. Students learned about the Indian tradition of applying the hand-based dye henna to skin as body art. They related the practice to not only tradition, but also dressing up during times on celebratory Elementary students engaged in community circles, which are gatherings where all participants sit in a circle facing each other to facilitate open and direct communication. The format provides for a safe, supportive space where students can talk about sensitive topics, work through differences, and build consensus. These class meetings help foster responsible, ethical student behaviors and assist in building student-centered learning communities. A teacher may hold community circle time in the morning or afternoon. The morning circle is a way for a student to check in on how everyone is feeling, a fist to five. Or afternoon community circle time is a time to contribute a shout-out for something great that happened during that day. I have one more, sorry. All of our students, all of our schools have student leadership teams. Here, we have a few pictures to demonstrate that. We are all so proud about the impact that our students have on our schools. They might help a new student feel more comfortable within the school, facilitate positive interactions among each other, such as at lunch or recess time, or lead other students during a buddy activity.
Hi. At High Crest and Willmet Junior High, continuous improvement of school climate has been a goal for the past two years. This year, we have taken specific steps on this journey and are seeing great results. First and foremost, we have teams of teachers at each school who are dedicated to looking at our school-wide behavior management. We use those teams to kick off the year with new expectations, new matrices for behavior, and new student accountability systems at each building. Hawks and Wolves are now acronyms used by students and staff alike to remember expectations for positive behavior and to remind students that anywhere they are, they are representatives of our school. Our student accountability system no longer utilizes demerits. Rather, it focuses on the importance of conversations and restorative practices with students to remind them of expected behavior and positive relationships. To kick off all of these new systems, we started the year learning about what makes us Hawks and Wolves, using the hashtags #WeAreHawks and #WeAreWolves, which now appear on tweets and throughout our buildings. We've had assemblies to introduce these terms, and we had a selfie contest at the beginning of the year for students to send selfies showing hawkish and wolfish behavior in our buildings. Other monthly hashtags led themes for different months. So we've centered around #WeAreGrateful, #WeAreGiving, #WeAreUnique. And that one is the one that we are currently focusing on across the campus. I want to highlight the hashtag #WeAreUpstanders theme from October. October is Bullying Prevention Month, so we chose this theme to focus much of our work around bullying prevention and distinguishing between bullying and social conflict. So we started with a survey to students to see kind of where they landed in their understanding of bullying versus social conflict. We had some scenarios that students responded to, whether they thought it was bullying, whether it was social conflict. And then we had students identify upstander behaviors. During that, or after that survey, we were able to see that there was some confusion between bullying and social conflict and also with respect to what being an upstander means. So that helped lead some of the activities that we embarked on over the month. So we had announcements differentiating between bullying and social conflict every day for a week. We held events on our half-day, which was on October 31st, dedicated to stories of overcoming bullying or acting as upstanders. So you can see, some of those pictures are on the slide right now. The presentations included Handicap This, which is a duo of two guys that go around and talk to schools about how they've partnered. There's one guy in a wheelchair and he has cerebral palsy. And then his assistant goes around with him and he tells stories about kind of their way about life and how they grew to be not only an assistant and as an assistant partnership, but also as friends. And now, you know, they're kind of like brothers and they kind of finish each other's sentences. So it was a real engaging assembly. Additionally, at High Crest, we had One Revolution, which featured an Olympic para-athlete or para-Olympic athlete, Haley Dan, who came and told us a little bit about, the assembly was focused around name tags. So they, it featured like identities and how they changed throughout time. And then finally, fifth graders had a kindness challenge through their assembly and were challenged to commit 5,000 acts of kindness in 15 days, which they surpassed. We also celebrated Unity Day on October 25th by wearing orange across the campus. It's a nationwide day that's celebrated by many schools to show that they are unified in preventing bullying and teasing. Across the 58 campus, students in homerooms submitted videos displaying how they are upstanders. And that was compiled into a single video that was shared with students through the broadcasts, in homerooms, and also with staff through the Friday Minute for Dr. Lechner. Each school has a confidential social conflict or bullying reporting form, which students can and do report unsafe acts that they either witness or are involved in. They are reported directly to administration, who follows up with the appropriate conversations and consequences where necessary. Staff members at High Crest are also participating in an ongoing upstander movement through an upstander spotlight that happens during our broadcast, where staff members tell their own stories of being upstanders or if they were in a bullying situation during their time in school. And that's been a real powerful way for staff to connect with kids throughout the year. Finally, across the campus, we are also utilizing our student leaders in the form of our Student Advisory Board. The Student Advisory Board is working to improve school climate through their work on these monthly hashtag themes. So far, students have chalked quotes outside of school, positive quotes. So when kids came into school, they saw things like "you are beautiful" on the walkways. They've created kindness quilts to send to fourth graders. And they've come up with activities to give back to schools, such as at the junior high, passing out hot chocolate on a cold day before winter break. And at High Crest, they had a Giving Tree event where kids talked about how they were giving back to their school community. We have many more exciting projects planned. We also utilize our student council, as you saw earlier. And this year, a new project where we utilize student leadership is through sixth-grade mentors who partner with fifth-grade classrooms and lead activities in those classrooms to get fifth graders connected to the school, especially at the outset of the year, but
School teams are continuing to routinely monitor attendance data in order to implement tiered interventions and provide support for students and their families. Recognizing that parents are integral to this goal, District 39 continues to take proactive steps by keeping parents informed of their child's attendance and by offering resources and relevant educational opportunities. Parents continue to receive monthly attendance reports that now include the added component of grade level averages. Last year, our analysis of chronic absences in District 39 revealed that the most common reasons for chronic absenteeism associated with school refusal were avoidance and escape. As such, District 39 provided parents with an educational event on how to raise resilient children with Jackie Rue, co-founder for Center for Emotional Wellness of the Northwest Suburbs. Mrs. Rue also provided a similar training to the paraprofessional staff, and she will be returning to District on February 19th to provide training and discussion with teachers. Beginning July 1st, 2018, it will become law that every school receiving public funds collect and review data regarding chronic absences and determining systems of support and resources needed to encourage daily attendance among those that are chronically absent. District 39 recognized this as a need in 2015, and we are well ahead of the curve in complying with this new law.
Thank you. Our next continuing initiative focus will be on sustainability. During year one, District 39 efforts focused on coordinating students-staff sustainability practices district-wide, like composting and recycling. And this year, we've maintained those practices and strive to do more. This year, Ms. Lindsay McNaut conducted a waste audit with her Integrated Global Studies students at High Crest Middle School on November 15th and 16th. And the purpose of the audit was to determine if students and staff were sorting their landfill garbage in inappropriate containers. They created a video of this process, and I'll be posting that to the district website under sustainability if you would like to view. But essentially, the students discovered that approximately 20% of the landfill waste could be added to the compost bag, while the remainder went into recycling with a small percentage being unopened food. So these results demonstrated that there was room for improvement, and they will be investigating ways on how to do that. The Department of Curriculum Instruction has conducted a thorough review of existing science and social studies curricula for environmental literacy goals. As you may recall, from the audit with Wald and Associates, that was one of our targets. So we use the environmental literacy strands that are listed on the screen for you, identified by the North American Association for Environmental Education. The environmental literacy audit results confirmed that District 39 curricula provides students with a multitude of learning opportunities in this area. But as an initial observation, we did notice that our social studies curriculum is the most strong with Strand Four, personal and civic responsibility, and the contexts are not necessarily centered around environmental issues. Therefore, these findings will provide a starting point for our next curriculum review cycle when we approach with science in the future. So Learning Commons spaces have been completed now at Central, Harper, Mackenzie, Ramona, and Willmet Junior High School. And these spaces offer opportunities for collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and communication. And a few more school-specific examples will be shared with you now.
So Harper continued with goals on the strategic plan to follow up on how we are implementing those four Cs across our Learning Commons. As of December 8th, I'm really happy to say that Harper studies and data on the four Cs indicates that 1,250 students have completed Maker Space challenges in the Learning Commons. 38% of those students were fourth graders, 31% third graders, 25% second graders, and 6% were kindergarten and first graders. Over 40% of the students feel that the challenges measure creativity, which is what we found last year as well, 24% collaboration, 21% critical thinking, and 15% communication. So as you recall, one of our primary goals of the Learning Commons was to really promote that creativity. And we're showing for the second year with our data at Harper, that certainly is being met. All students partook in an Hour of Coding in December. Worldwide, there were over 100 million participants. So that was really cool for our kids to be a part of that. Also at Harper, students partook in Maker Days challenges on December 21st, and another day will be held on February 2nd. These special school-wide events facilitate maker activities that can't always be conducted in a typical classroom. They're oftentimes messy. So on the December one, they did some things like making snow, and they also did paintings that had their hands being all painted, putting on paper, and doing snowflake designs, I guess you could say. Some of them even utilized the bottoms of their feet to do this. So they were super special.
The focus this year in the Willmet Junior High Learning Commons is also on the four Cs: communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. And we're looking specifically at how the Learning Commons, as a reimagined learning space, can enhance the development of these skills in our students. Some of the highlights from the Learning Commons this year involving the four Cs include Hour of Code events, similar to at High Crest, involving all homerooms. The creation of book trailers for eighth-grade reading classes, where students create, work with a group, they collaborate, they communicate, and then they create these book trailers that are then shared out. The use of the presentation space for guest lawyers, actually, to come and share experiences with the Supreme Court as a part of the Supreme Court simulation, where then groups of students then broke up and used the entire space to work on their individual roles for that project. But one that I really want to highlight is the use of breakout boxes or breakout EDU boxes for special events. So our DST at the junior high, along with our tech teachers, applied for a GRIP grant, much in the way that many of the elementary schools did, for breakout EDU boxes. And one example was in a seventh-grade reading class, where students had read The Adventures of Johnny Waverly by Agatha Christie as a part of their mystery unit. And then, as a part of the review for the unit, they had the breakout EDU activity. So you can see, if you're looking at the screen, it's in the right-hand corner, the teams of kids gathered around the breakout boxes. And so how the breakout box works is, for this particular unit, they had clues that the teacher had created with the DST about the book as a review for, or for the story, as a review for the story. And so they worked in teams, they talked about each one, they tried to solve each clue, and then they would get a number that's a code to unlock the box. And so they had to save Johnny's stuffed dog, which is, it relates to the mystery, from the breakout box. And so it was a really interactive activity where the kids were reviewing the novel that they, or the book that they had read, along with really having fun and being engaged and communicating, collaborating, critically thinking, and also being creative all the while. In addition to the four Cs, some other goals of the Learning Commons this year have been to incorporate more Maker Space activities. And we do that through Tinker Thursdays, where homerooms are invited to come down and do activities that are actually less techie and more tinkery. So you can see some kids on the left side of the screen working with building circuits. And there was a special spooky circuit activity that we did over a couple weeks in October, leading into Halloween. And then also, we are looking at increasing the use of the Learning Commons before and after school. So before school, the Learning Commons is open at 7:15 and offers students drop-in opportunities to come get tech help. Homework assistance also takes place in that space. And lots of students just stop by to check out a book or, you know, meet up with a friend if they have some quick things to do before school gets started for a project. After school, many students use the LC Weather for math review sessions, drop-in homework club, homework assistance, or just to come and work in a small group space with a group of partners on a project. So on any given day, you can see many students utilizing this space in those flexible hours before and after school. We've also worked really hard on increasing the time and the amount of students that we can take in at lunch, so during recess. And on most days, we were able to offer it to 40-plus students at lunch from a given grade level. So that's a really great success, and I think it just shows how much the students are excited about a space, the space. And just as a little aside, we were talking to kids about the great things with the Learning Commons space and just other things that we could do to enhance the four Cs across the school. And hands down, the kids are like, "The Learning Commons is the most awesome space because of the small group rooms. Can we add more around the whole entire school? Because we love working like that." So pretty neat effect that it's had on our kids. So pretty neat effect that it's had on our kids.
This portion will review some of the annual business. So we will start with the 5-8, Grades 5-8 Related Arts Committee. The committee meets once a month with the goal to make recommendations regarding the related arts courses offered to students in grades 5 through 8. And we began by discussing what we believe to be important for District 39 students. Although the philosophy or position statement is still in draft form, a couple of common beliefs surfaced to the members of the committee. So one was that all students need an opportunity to explore and learn about each related arts strand or category, whichever you would like to call it, with a gradual increase in student choice in the upper grades. There should also be consistency in course offerings, length of the course, and learning pathways that span the grade levels. So currently, the committee is engaged in reviewing existing course offerings, brainstorming additional course ideas, and matching courses to appropriate grade levels. The committee will continue its work and develop recommendations for course progression to share with you later in the year. So the English Language Arts Curriculum is in its second year of implementation, the writing component is. The Revised Reading Curriculum is in its first year of implementation. District 39 continued its partnership with the Chicago Literacy Group, who are experts in the workshop approach to provide ongoing training and support to teachers. We've also ensured that each classroom library had varied texts by genres, topics, and levels to provide students' choice based on level or interest. The world language teachers are reflecting on this first year of implementation, monitoring student progress, and identifying areas for improvement. The teachers have dedicated much time and energy, excuse me, to aligning performance-based assessments and rubrics with the end-of-course expectations for performance toward proficiency in mind. The teachers will meet again to share, reflect, and offer ways to improve on the units of study they are implementing. So for the Library-Media-Technology Curriculum, we believe that promoting positive digital citizenship is the shared responsibility of teachers, students, and parents. And during February Institute Day, which is the 19th, District 39 has invited Dr. Kristin Matson to engage staff in learning how to make digital citizenship an integral part of the classroom experience and not a standalone. And also, that's all. Excuse me, as it teetered off. Okay. So the Progress Reporting and Report Card Committee accomplished two goals for grades 1 through 4. It updated the progress reporting documents to reflect the current Illinois learning standards and district curriculum maps, and revised the language on the documents to clearly communicate with parents and students. Here, you're looking at two different sections of a report card. The image on the left are the behaviors that promote learning, and these were developed by taking the ideas embedded in the characteristics of successful learners and connecting language and phrasing that students were familiar with and understand from their Second Step lessons. On the right is a sample of a math section on the report card. Enlisted are the math standard domains with corresponding priority standards for the grade level. This should look familiar to you since I showed it last May. But it is important to note, as we are coming up on the first report card distribution in February, that learning standards reference end-of-grade-level standards. Therefore, in the first semester report, we do expect that most students will be progressing toward the standards since they have many more months of learning until the end of the year. In grades 5 through 6, the teachers are focused on identifying existing evidence within District 39 curricula and also engaging in, or will be engaging in, more professional development and standards-based practices, much like the grades 7 through 8 teachers. Now kindergarten's very special. The Progress Reporting document for kindergarten is designed as a continuum of development, and each child's progress report takes into consideration the unique progression and development of this particular age group. So here, you're looking at a math section of a kindergarten progress report, and the learning standards referenced are broken down into components, with end-of-kindergarten standards falling within the center of this continuum, or the middle two columns. Therefore, in the first semester report, we do expect that most students will be progressing toward the standards, or at least toward the fourth column of meeting the standard. And finally, this is the first year that the district began early dismissals on Fridays for students. Early dismissals have been able to provide teachers collaboration time to discuss student data, plan for interventions, and have cross-department grade-level articulations. In addition, Department of CNI has been able to visit each school on a weekly rotation, and we are able to have face-to-face meetings with small groups of teachers trained by grade levels or support teachers on a variety of topics on a regular basis. The Scheduling Committee held its first meeting in November, and the next meeting will be on February 15th. We do not plan to make any structural changes to the schedule this year, but will continue to assess the schedule for any necessary tweaks next year in 2018-19. So with that end, next month, the board will be presented updates on the new strategic initiatives, as well as one continuing initiative that we did not touch upon, which was the student growth, and that will be a full report on its own.
Great. Thank you very much. Board members, do we have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I do. From that meeting in November with the Scheduling Committee, what were the, what was the early feedback from the group about how the schedule's going?
It was early on. We had only been nine weeks into the schedule. There were things that were going well, and there were things that we're going to need to revisit in February to see if they're still continuing to be challenging and if we need to make tweaks for the next school year. But generally, the thing that came across as most positive was having a large amount of planning time for each grade level to work together during the school day. That was a significant factor we worked towards, but that was the most positive.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Thank you for this report. And I'm not sure if this is the right time and place for this question, but it was my understanding that we are in review of the Second Step program right now. Is this the, where are we right now in that review?
The committee's working hard. We did surveys with teachers, paraprofessionals, and students, grades just 5 to 8 for the students, to get their impressions of the Second Step program and how it's being carried over into their life, and the teachers, how they're implementing it. We are looking at alternate curriculums to just do our due diligence and investigate, and having curriculum companies come in. We had Face the Nation as our first one, and in February, the middle of February, we'll be having two more companies come in to present what they might be able to offer us, and we're just still in the review and analysis part.
Ms. Kearney.
Thank you, Mark. If Dr. Klowacki can come back up, I have a follow-up question to what Mrs. Fabe's asked. What has been the parent feedback as far as the early release on Friday? Have you received any?
We haven't seen, we have not received direct parent feedback. Anecdotally, in talking with the building principals to see how it's going logistically with the Friday dismissal, it seems to be sort of evening out and becoming more of a routine. And we haven't seen a dramatic decline in families taking advantage of that one hour of...
That was my next question. I can't, it's a sincere question, too. I don't, we are providing an hour of supervision, or whatever. Okay. So have you found that parents take advantage of that hour?
So parents, we asked parents to commit to that in August of last year for the full year.
Okay.
And parents have taken us up on that offer, and we're consistently monitoring that.
Perfect. I have more questions, but...
Can I just ask a question? Follow that. What percentage of students would you say take advantage of that hour of care?
Depends on the building.
Oh, okay. But is it 50%? Is it 10%? Is it 80%?
What's the range?
What's the range? Yeah.
I can't speak for all of the elementaries. I know Ramona has the largest majority, but not close to 50%.
Okay.
Close to 50%.
Close to 50% is the highest.
At Harper, we have approximately 25, 30 students. So it's a range across the buildings.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Can I ask? Thank you. I think this is for Mrs. Jackson. When you were referring to the school climate, and maybe you should be there, too, I'm not sure, how are the students selected as, for the student leadership?
Sure. For the student advisory boards. Yes. So we have a student advisory board at each grade level, and so the GLADs sent out an email, I think it was mid-October, to the whole student body and said, "Hey, we're starting this group, and they're going to be working on school climate." It was in kid-friendly language, but, you know, "Start to plan some things if you are interested in being involved. Here's a couple of questions. Why would you be interested in working towards positive climate in our school? And, you know, how do you feel about..." I don't remember exactly what the questions were. There were two questions on there. And so we basically took anybody that applied, which at 5th grade was a huge amount of kids. It was 50-plus kids at 5th grade. 6th grade was slightly lower, but still a pretty big group. At 7th and 8th grade, of course, it went down, but we have a good 15 kids at each grade level. So I'd say 12 to 15. And so what we've done at 5th grade is we've grouped them into groups of three, so they have different sessions that they're working with Mr. Jubno and myself on Student Advisory Board. And then in 6th grade, I think she has two sections, Mrs. Dillard does. So we wanted to give all the kids an opportunity to be involved, and just talking with some of the kids, they're super excited about what's coming on the horizon for them as we get closer to their session, so that they can have some involvement in the planning. But it's been a great group of kids that are really kind of think tanks and have great ideas.
So student leadership and student advisory are the same thing?
So we, kind of, the student leadership is really a big umbrella. We have a couple of different venues for student leadership. So we have our student advisory board that's really focused on school climate and our monthly hashtags. We have our student council that really does, they're more like a typical student government, and they do school spirit, and then they do some community service activities. And then we have some, like, the 6th grade mentors are just 6th grade to 5th grade for transition purposes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I follow?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. I'm just wondering, with all these great activities focused on school climate, are you feeling a difference?
I would say yes. I think that the kids are, you know, I don't have statistics for that, and we certainly want to, we'll do a post-survey with, specifically with social conflict and bullying later on in the year after doing more activities. But I think the students, we see increasing amounts of students wanting to get involved. We have students talking about, you know, especially when they do like the confidential reporting form, you know, "I wanted to be an upstander. I wanted to talk about, I wanted to stand up for my friend. This is the best way I knew how." We have kids just in regular conversation, just saying how they, you know, or, for example, when we did the Giving Tree thing, we had posters on doors, and kids were able to record how they are giving back to their school community. And a lot of doors that I walked by said, "I give back by being a friend to others. I give back by standing up for what I know is right," things like that, and trying to make a difference in the community. I mean, certainly, we're going to continue to have, as every middle school, junior high has incidents throughout the year, but I think that it's decreased significantly.
So, and I think you said that, why I'm asking responsibilities as far as the advisory board or whatever, there's not like a peer jury or anything.
No, we don't have a peer jury.
Okay, perfect. I think it's young for that. So, thank you. And then, in the same, in the school climate, how is it that investigations, if there's a bullying report or something reported, how are investigations handled, and who determines the consequences?
Sure. And consequences are determined, I'm just going to start there, kind of on an individual case-by-case basis. So what happens is if we get a report of bullying, it may come through on our confidential form, it may come through a student reporting it, or a parent reporting it. And so we try to find out kind of which students are involved in that, and then the administration will work together and will interview kids and find out kind of what's going on, and, you know, who was in which role in the situation. If it's, we'll determine then if it's a bullying situation, or if it was social conflict. And then, based on kind of whatever the incident is, then we have different follow-ups that might happen. So we've been utilizing a lot more of restorative practices. We have Liz Pike, who is our Behavior Management Specialist, who works in both buildings, and so she'll work with us. Sometimes she does restorative circles with kids where they're talking about the issue that happened and kind of making amends through that conversation. It may take more than one circle also, so that's an option that we have. Sometimes a social worker's involved, sometimes it's traditional consequences, such as a detention or like an in-school type of suspension. It just depends on the level of the infraction and kind of what went on. Now, I will say, with traditional discipline, we are also trying to couple that with increased reflection, because we are, we've learned, kind of through research and over time, if you just say, "Here's your detention, stay in at lunch," the kid says, "So what? It's cold outside, I don't want to go outside anyway." So we want to make sure that the students are reflecting on what their role was, who it affected, and how they can improve moving forward. And so our GLADs, along with Ms. Pike sometimes, or other adults that they are friends, or not friends with, but they have a relationship with, then we'll come and talk to them and touch base, and we'll work with parents the entire time through that process.
Specifically, I like the circle thing. You talked about the restorative circles. Prior to getting to that point, that sounds like after the investigation is over.
Absolutely.
During the investigation, when you're interviewing children and parents, et cetera, are those parents, are those children ever in the same room?
We usually do it individually, so it works better that way. So, yes, that's pretty much...
It's an opinion, but yes, I get it. And then, as far as the, you know, meaningful practices, instead of just sitting inside because it's cold out anyway, and versus writing "I will never do this again" on a chalkboard a thousand times, do you have them write like papers, make presentations? Is there any kind of that?
Sometimes, depending on what it is. Again, it really depends on what has gone on. We do have a reflection sheet that students do fill out with pointed questions. What happened? How were you involved? Who did it affect? How did it affect that person? What's your plan to make it right with that person? So those sorts of questions. And then, an adult will talk through those questions and also share that feedback with the parents.
And are parents notified that, like, a consequence like that is going to happen before it happens?
Yep.
And do they have to agree to it?
We notify parents and discuss why we would be following up with that, and so that it comes through. It's more of a joint process. It's not necessarily an agree or disagree.
We're getting a little bit into the weeds here, so maybe bring it back up. I understand, and you know that you always have the opportunity to ask these questions separately, so it's fun.
But not publicly, so that's...
I understand.
One more. The chronic attendance, talking to that with the, what's going on with that, have you noticed a difference in this year versus last year as far as attendance goes as a result of the monthly reminders?
We collected data on attendance last week, and currently, we have 74% of our students who are in the positive attendance range, which is good. If we were to continue on this trajectory, we would be very close to meeting our goal.
Right.
However, in the past two years that we've collected data midpoint, it's also been higher, and then we've seen it dip kind of around spring break and then go back up. So it's not, I think time will tell. It's kind of too early to tell.
So as of right now, we haven't seen much of a difference?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But flu season has been bad this year.
I understand. I had it myself.
Frank, did you have any questions?
Yes, I had a couple of follow-up questions on the progress reporting.
Yes.
I guess I'm not completely clear on why we did this, but has there been any parent feedback on the reduced information that they're getting now?
No, there hasn't been any family or parent feedback. They haven't seen the full document yet. They will in February. But I would beg to differ that they're actually getting less information, they're getting more. Last May, I shared some slides that compared the old format to the new, and these new Illinois standards are more detailed and more specific and broken down, you know, by specific domains. Whereas, for example, you would have a descriptor that says "computes accurately." Last year, the report card said "computes accurately." This year, the standard would act... This year, the standard would actually be targeted and more specifically stated to within what? You know, double-digit multiplication, that standard. So it's a bit more detailed. So you get more information this way.
Well, I guess my question was related in that sense and to, there used to be more pros, there, you know, free format comments from the teachers at the quarter. And you know, the semester hasn't come out yet, but at the quarter level, it looks like that was eliminated.
Which grade level are you speaking about?
Personal eighth grade.
Okay, so seventh and eighth grade has not changed anything. Right now, seventh and eighth grade, all we are doing is learning about standards-based practices and we're engaging in discourse about what that means and how what we currently do match up to what these best practices are saying. The only revisions that have been made are in grades one through four and then in kindergarten. So what we've done there is updated the standards-based reporting documents that were before, based on the old Illinois standards to reflect more of the new, the updated standards. Oh, you're speaking about the progress reports?
Yes.
For, right, okay, sorry. So that, that switch of the mid-semester report was just to give a snapshot information before the actual semester end term information was given. And so I know that in the past, it was four report cards that kind of delineated the end of units of study. And this time, it was more, hey, to give the students some feedback about this is where you are, this is where you, you know, stand right now and how could we improve from here to the end of the semester. So you should get more information in semester one.
Okay, I'll look, I'll talk to you about that offline then. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, thank you very much for the reports.
Mark, I have one more question about pathways to learning. Just a clarification. When you were talking about this for related arts, when you said, learning pathways, are you talking about just, like if you took coding in fifth grade, that it would increase through eighth grade or something? I'm just using a class as an example?
There are some, there are some courses that build from fifth to sixth to seventh and eighth. And then there's some that are literally just injected into seventh grade. So what we want to do, in this audit, it revealed what those types of courses were. And what we want to do is evaluate, where does it make sense to have a progression from sixth, seventh, eighth? Or five, six, seventh? Or five through eight?
That's perfect. I just wanted to make sure, that's how I was understanding it.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much for all of the work and for the ongoing work. We look forward to hearing the end-of-year conclusions to all of these. That moves us on to annual business. Ray?
Yes, our next item is the fiscal year budget calendar resolution annually. The board is required to establish its fiscal year and appoint a person to prepare the tenant a budget. In addition, a budget calendar is developed and shared with the public. Ms. Buscemi, anything to add?
I just wanted to say that the budget calendar is developed to ensure all publications, hearing, and formal adoption of the annual budget are in accordance with the state statute. The budget calendar is presented will meet all of the state's requirements.
Thank you.
Next, we have.
You have questions on the fiscal year budget calendar and resolution? Okay, go ahead.
Apologize. I just want to understand something. So for example, Gail, and I know this is what the budget calendar looks like every year, but I'm looking at it differently these days. So in February, we approved capital projects for fiscal year 19, correct? But we have not yet received from the state any acknowledgement of the actual monies we will be receiving.
That is correct. We don't get a confirmation on the levy until possibly May, early June.
So why do we approve those kind of in February?
Are you talking about the construction projects?
It says approve capital projects, not on life safety.
Right, because we actually have the funds in our fund balance. So we're using those funds to pay for those projects.
But there's a significant problem with bidding in May?
I under.
Okay, we would not be able to.
I'm just kind of trying to wrestle my head around when we make decisions and as we're required to, but sometimes it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it's based on our projections and our fiscal analysis and we make those knowing that we're going to have, unless there's some unknown crisis in the world, but we know that we can afford those projects ahead of time.
Good answer. But, and also, I think you want to say that while we approve all those things, the final budget is actually not voted on until, much until September. Actually, you're right, approval of the fiscal year. I just think it's interesting just how the calendar flows and where, without knowing all the information. So technically, I understand, we use our reserves as a cash flow.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
That's what the reserves are for. Any questions, any other questions on this? Okay, January Special Education Child Account.
Yes, each January, a child count, a child count report is given to the State Board of Education, which they use for special education funding and monitoring trends in disability identification. The overall number of students who qualify for special ed services in District 39 has remained the same as last year, 504 students. This represents just under 14% of our students. It is on par with the state average. Doctors Thrasher and DeCristofaro have this report.
As Dr. Lekner mentioned, we currently have 504 students, oops, I need to change this. We currently have 504 students receiving special education services through District 39. This chart highlights the numbers and percentages of our special education population over the years. This year's number of students with IEPs is consistent compared with last year, though the overall percentage of students with IEPs has increased due to the decline in student enrollment. This chart provides a historical perspective of our percentage of students with IEPs in District 39. The red bar represents the population of students in EC through eighth grade who have IEPs under one of our 14 disability categories. This year, that percentage is 13.97% of our students. The blue bar represents the percentage of identified students in grades K through eight. When early childhood is removed, the percentage of kindergarten through eighth grade students with IEPs is 12.44%. We also track disability eligibility and analyze the numbers, looking for trends. In tonight's presentation, we will be reviewing the historical data for learning disabilities, speech and language, developmental delayed, autism, other health impaired, and intellectual disability. Learning disabilities is one of the areas where we saw numbers stabilize from the previous year. Students qualify as needing special education under the category of learning disabilities through the RTI process. This has been an IDEA requirement since 2010. We saw a large decrease in our speech and language numbers from 2011 and 2012, when the developmental delay eligibility could extend through age nine. With exception to 2016, the speech and language numbers have stabilized but decreased slightly this year. The category of developmental delayed covers the range of three to nine. Most of our EC students receive service with this eligibility and many students identified in kindergarten through second grade qualify as developmental delayed. In this graph, the red line represents the number of students identified as having a speech and language disability and the blue line represents students identified with a developmental delay. We hypothesize that there is a relationship between the increasing numbers of students identified as having a developmental delay and the decreasing numbers in speech and language.
Our numbers of students with autism continue to go up. Families do move to OMET for the services we offer to students with more complex needs. This is also in line with national statistics of how many children are identified with autism. Other health impaired covers medical conditions like ADHD and even some anxiety disorders. We're not seeing much fluctuation with this disability at all. An intellectual disability is characterized by significant limitations in both learning, adaptive behavior, and functioning. It's a condition from birth that lasts throughout a child's life. These numbers were stable and ranged between 11 to 15 prior to 2010. We saw these numbers decrease in 2011, but they have been going back up the past three years. Early childhood intervention and school programs support development, acceptance, and community involvement. Because of our strong program and inclusive environment, students with intellectual disabilities are successful here. Again, parents often move to OMET for services that we offer. This chart lists the 14 categories of disabilities. There continues to be gender differences in each category. Surprisingly, this is even true of students where the condition might be congenital in nature. Nationally, there are more boys than girls identified with disabilities. Here, we see how many students at District 39 support that do not attend one of our six schools. These include students with individual service plans at St. Joe's and St. Francis, students receiving early childhood speech and language therapy here at the MEC, and students placed in therapeutic schools. So District 39 continues to offer continuum of special ed services to meet the need of students with IEPs. Our inclusive programs, co-teaching, collaboration, response intervention efforts, and related service combined to meet the needs of our learners. At this time, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Penzica?
Thank you for the report. The numbers that you represent is part of the factor, but are there any differences in resources or costs with the different categories? And is there any, you know, trend increase in resource needed going up or costs to support some of these categories are being different than in the past?
Not different than in the past. We follow the IEP and that's where services are determined. So related service, whether it's OT, speech, OT. The other thing to note, though, some of our disabilities require more specialized instruction. Those class sizes are smaller. So if you look at teacher-to-student ratio, that's higher. So then when you divide out the cost of a teacher based on the number of students, so it's hard to say that costs are going up, going down.
I think his question is, there are some programs that are more expensive to administer than others. And within those programs, do we see increasing enrollments? For example?
Yes, we, again, because we provide strong program and related services to some, to our students with more complex needs, we have added teachers to support children.
The answer is yes to your question.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Noe.
I didn't see, I was looking at attachment four that you sent us that shows a breakdown in High Crest and WJHS. I was kind of curious if you have any, any statistics or information you can give us on how it breaks down in terms of students that are enrolled in the AS classes? The, I know you have the inclusion classrooms. They're self-contained classrooms and then there's, but there's students that are in the AS classrooms with LBSs. And then we have the WIN classes that are not, they're not our special needs students per se. Those are kids that are receiving intervention that can go in and out and hopefully will just be mainstream into regular, but those can be students with 504s, correct? Students that are.
It could be.
So they could, so kids that are in the WIN intervention can have or not have 504s? And the students in the AS classes have IEPs, correct?
Correct, students in AS have IEPs. Now, it could be possible a student could be in the WIN class with an IEP, depending on if, let's say, for example, you had a student that had a learning disability in math and now we were going, they were beginning to struggle with reading, then we could put them in a WIN class to provide some extra interventions to see if that is enough support or if we need to open up the evaluation and look at adding reading under learning disability.
I'd be interested to see the numbers of students, the breakdown of numbers of students that are utilizing the services, particularly the AS classes in the, in High Crest and the junior high school, just statistically speaking, you know, where the numbers fall in terms of the special education.
We can get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. This is great. Just next time, for the High Crest and WJHS, I just had trouble following. You've got functional academic listed in B, which all the K through four schools, you have that in the C. You see what I'm saying?
I do see.
And I was trying to add stuff up because I was trying, looking at High Crest. So I looked at, for instance, all the K4 schools, learning center, I'm sorry, functional academic support. Added those numbers, thinking that's what you would expect to see at High Crest next year. You know what I'm saying? Right? And that's, and I was all messed up for a long time because then I realized those two were flipped around.
Okay, sorry.
Just, no, no problem. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I think so. Forgive my ignorance on a lot of this stuff, but I think I was following you. I'm looking at attachment three. And I think you explained this. So there's kind of a relationship between speech and language impairment numbers over time and developmental delay.
Yes.
Right, so one's going up and one's going down? Probably just a difference of.
Because.
How you characterize something.
Right, well, because before, development delayed ended at age six. So when a child turns six, if they still needed special support, they could not be qualified under DD any longer. So frequently, they would then qualify under speech and language.
Got it.
Not always, but it could happen. Now, because that goes to age nine, we're seeing less children being able, because we know we want to provide the support, they have to have an IDEA eligibility. So before we go to age nine, now after nine, sometimes there'll be learning disabled instead of speech and language.
But these are primary disabilities that you see on this chart? So the primary disability shift from speech only to developmentally delayed, but they're still getting speech services?
Okay.
Yes, that's on chart, I believe, one?
Yeah.
Where it talks about the related service. And if you see the number of children with IEPs and then how many are also getting related service?
I appreciate that. The other question I have, and I'm sorry, I'm so new to this, but the autism numbers are remarkable to me because they start out at zero and they're now at 46. Is that, what is that? Because forgive me for my ignorance. Is that just a diagnosis thing or?
Again, it statistically shows nationally, one in like every 66 child could be diagnosed as having autism. It used to be one in 150. It's more prevalent all over and then we provide the services.
Is that one of the disabilities that's related to move-ins?
I do believe that families move here for our services.
Yeah, yeah, that's really where I'm going with this. So do we anticipate larger populations of move-ins given the state of education financing in the rest of the state and the city of Chicago?
We also have to be able to afford to live here, you know? And buy a home or rent a home and be a community member as well.
There's definitely an attraction here. So it's based on, like you said, who can afford to live here and also the availability of housing. But we can't predict.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is, because there's been some pretty big leaps over the years. So we're prepared, I guess, is what I'm really asking. So you're prepared for a leap of 50 more?
How many years did that take place, that leap?
No, it looks like one, from 16 to 17, just looking at all the numbers.
No, autism only, though.
Oh, no, autism only. No, I was just, sorry, I was going to, yep, I changed the subject.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions? Mr. Penzica?
Yes, I had a follow-up. I guess I'm trying to, trying to put a number, a dollar number on this. And you've done a really nice job of having a numerical number of students that follow these categories. But from a budgeting standpoint, how much money, incremental money do we spend on these categories? And where is the? And where is the trend going would be the type of question that I would have.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. That's going to be part of our financial analysis that we do with the School Finance Committee. We're going to be looking at individual departments and giving you that data. So yes, that's a good question.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question with that? Is, while we're looking at those costs, will we also be looking at the revenues that are against those? I'm being specific that I know that with much of the state funding that we receive is, as a result of special education.
That is correct. Much of our, much of our state funding is tied to special education. So there's a relationship between, you're exactly right.
Thank you. I have one more clarification with, so when I was talking about the order of things, there was, so just so I'm understanding Attachment 4 correctly, if I looked at 2018, and this is just an example, in the functional academic category in each of the four K through four schools, I would be expecting to see 21 children at High Crest next year.
Remember that it goes kindergarten through fourth grade?
Right.
At each elementary? So this number here lists all the students.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Not just fourth graders going to third grade.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly why I was asking. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much for the report. Let's move on to the 2018-19 school calendar. Yes, based on input from administration, teachers, and the township, this is ready for your approval. The first day of school will be August 30th, and the last day will be June 14th. After the board accepts this calendar, we'll submit to the State Board of Education for final approval. Any questions? All right, looks like we're good on this one. Let's move on to the financial auditing firm contract extension. We discussed this at the School Finance Committee meeting and reminded the board that in December of 2014, the Board of Education approved a three-year contract with our CPA, Klein Hall. We have an option to extend the contract for an extra year, up to a maximum of five years. So we're recommending that the district extend the contract for one additional year to encompass the fiscal year 2018 audit. Ms. Buscemi, anything to add? Any questions? Okay. Thank you. That moves us along to board review, board policy review. Yes, we have two different types of policies here tonight. First, we have the next series of first-read policies for the board this evening. And secondly, we have a second set of policies that includes a resolution. On November 16th, the governor signed Public Act 100-5454 into law, requiring school districts and other governmental bodies to review and update their policies related to sexual harassment. And then we were given 60 days to implement. The two revised policies in front of you, Uniform Grievance Procedure and Workplace Harassment Prohibited, are ready for your approval tonight, and Dr. Glouacki has this report.
So we'll start with 2:260. There were, one, a few changes that were made to the formatting since it was posted. If you look at the first page, number three, the current version reads sexual harassment or sexual discrimination, which includes failing to provide breastfeeding accommodations for students. Just going to highlight these since these were changes since it was posted. If you move on to page three of four and the same policy, it's just a matter of reformatting where it begins with, "Within 30 school business days of receiving any of the following." That's reformatted, but the content is the same. And there were a few commas added on page four of four with that policy.
I'm sorry, Dr. Glouacki, just, did you say the first one was a, removing the "a" from the beginning of the, on the first page?
First page, number three.
I think there's an extraneous "a" in the first paragraph, in the first sentence of the second paragraph. The way I have it, it reads, "A students, parents, guardians, etc." I think it should just be students, parents, guardians.
Okay.
That's just a grammatical oversight, I think. Could be either way.
A student, parent, guardian, employee, or community member. So we got rid of plural.
I'm okay either way, but it, but it's grammatically incorrect as it is now. A students, is that?
No.
The S is crossed out.
Oh, maybe I have a, maybe I have an old version of it. It's not...
There's a strike through. It was changed from plural to...
A students. Oh, I see. That's my fault, sorry. Should bring my glasses in. Thank you, sorry. Okay.
I have a question, too, regarding this. Does this apply to students at all? It seems just employees.
There is a student policy, Policy 7:20, harassment of students prohibited. So Section 7 is related to students and Section, this, Section 2 is just Uniform Grievance Procedure. So if a student were to raise a complaint, we would follow the same procedures.
Does this just apply for a student raising a complaint over an employee or student-on-student?
It could be student to student.
Okay.
And this is the procedure we would follow to investigate the complaint.
Okay, so, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
And then, Policy 5:20, we added cyber in that second paragraph, under sexual harassment prohibited, where it says, "But is not limited to verbal, physical, or cyber contact." Page 205, we struck a sentence in that first paragraph, "Employees may choose to report the person of the, report to a person of the employee's same sex." And then we added, under, where it says, "The superintendent shall insert into this policy and keep current the positions and addresses." So in other words, making sure the contact information is correct with current employees. That was it for changes to that policy.
Can I ask why we removed "Employees may choose to report a person of the employee's same sex"?
Because... It was actually redundant.
Because I asked, because I think that that was discriminatory. There's no need to say that at all.
Because it just seems, you can obviously just...
Because anybody can be sexually...
I agree with that. I'm just asking why.
But just to clarify, I did talk to the attorney about that. It actually is stated twice. If you look under whom to contact with a report or complaint, it's listed there. Employees may choose to report to a person of the employee's same sex. I asked the question because the concern came up, and our attorney recommended that we keep that there as a reminder that if our complaint managers, if we were all, let's say, male, and we had a female making a complaint, they have a right to ask for someone of their same sex to report to.
The, it's two separate things, though. This says, "A person may choose to report a person of the same sex for an offense," versus "reporting to a person."
Sorry. It seems, thank you.
I want to go back to Tracy's comment about whether or not this applies to students complaining, making a complaint about another student. It, I don't know that it actually does unless you add the word "student" in the second paragraph, meaning, "A student, parent, guardian, employees, or community member should notify a district complaint manager if he or she believes that the Board of Education, its employees, fellow student," should be inserted, "or agents." Like, as it's written right now, it's not student to student.
Are you back on 2260?
Yeah. I just want to make sure we all understand.
I think it should apply student to student. The way I was reading it, but I was looking at 520, it says, "General personnel." And I know that's not the policy you're talking about, that says, "Board of Education." But I read it the same way you did, Lisa. The only thing that made me agree is the first paragraph refers to students being able to file a complaint, but not once throughout it does it ever refer to student-on-student.
So I guess I would look at this as, this is a process for making a complaint. That's, this is the process we would follow to investigate. There's a whole separate policy that talks about harassment of students to students, 720. And so this is a process we would follow if a complaint got raised to our level that we would need to investigate. But the actual prohibition of student harassment is in 720. Clarify?
Got it, thank you.
So wait, but it doesn't, so this does not apply to students, 720 does?
720 talks about the prohibition of harassment with students. This is a process in which we would follow to investigate if we needed to investigate at a complaint level.
Right, but we still don't refer to students in it.
So what you're saying is, if I'm a student and I have a complaint against another student, 720 is covering the student conduct, yes? And this is, this is a different beast.
No, I think you're okay. There wasn't a question there, I don't think. John, if you have a question, go ahead and ask on the mic. Great. Any other questions? Okay, so I think that is 260 and seven, and, sorry, 520. And then do we want to, are we going over the others or the first reads?
If there's feedback, sure.
Think there's feedback on those? Tracy, did you have something? Okay, I'll go first. Anybody else have something? Okay, this is first read. I did have some questions about 6190, which is extracurricular and co-curriculars. So the, the scheduling of school-sponsored activities on the night before school day should be kept within reasonable limits. This is a question for other board members. So personally, I would rather have a more, I would rather have the district recommend a more specific limit. I think it should be the district's decision what the limit is, but I think reasonable limits is not concrete enough for me. So feel free to let Ray know if you feel the same way or you don't feel the same way, and then we can talk about it in the second read. Not like at midnight, right? I get what you're saying. Well, I think that, so in the policy, it should, it would probably read, I'm making this up off the top of my head, so, you know, but in the policy, it would probably read that the district would set a concrete limit. And then I wouldn't want the board to set a specific, it wouldn't want the board policy to read, can't go past midnight or 10 or whatever. I would want the district to be responsible for making sure there's a limit and understanding that there can be exceptions. That's one specific reason. Right. So what you're saying, then, it would become your, the board policy would say, and you need to have a specific procedure what that limit is, but you've not put it in, got it? That's right. That's right. It just makes it more concrete than reasonable limits, which is subject to interpretation. And then the other question I had about 6190 is in the last sentence that's added on, "Students must satisfy all academic standards and must comply with the activity's rules and the student code of, or, excuse me, conduct code." And I just don't know where we outline what the academic standards are to be able to participate. I don't need a policy change, but if we want to be more specific, we should, and otherwise, I'd just like to know what we do.
As a follow-up to Mark's, and the student code of conduct, I mean, something in the student conduct code is like the length of somebody's shorts. I mean, is that, would that, yeah, I'd like to know that, too, where, what standards are met and to disqualify or qualify someone for participating based on those questions, too.
Okay. I do have some sort of just grammatical edits to 7180, so I will pass them along to you by email, and maybe you can send out a red line so other boards can see what they, and board members can see what they are, but I don't see why we need to discuss them now. Yes, go ahead.
I have another question on 7180. I really like the idea of the every-two-year evaluation of the policy, but it's also saying that we're going to get the data on bullying and what have you every two years as well. I'm just wondering if we want the data every year and then do the review of the policy every two. I don't know what other board members think. If you're collecting the data, anyway. Okay, so this is saying that every two years, the district and the board will reevaluate the policy in addition to looking at the data on how many people are bullied, what's happening per school, what have you. So this is a every-two-year review, and what I'm saying is, we're tracking the data anyway? Why don't we get the data every year and do the reeval every two?
I'm okay with that. But again, let's go ahead. Board members, this is, so I'm trying to encourage our practice of, if we want to bring it up in the meeting, we don't have to discuss it right then. Allow board members to have some room to think and ponder. So if you have comments or thoughts about that suggestion, please make sure you get in touch with Ray and let him know, and we'll discuss it on second read. Okay?
I have a couple of questions about this policy. We're on it, 7180. And I might be getting into the weeds here, Mark, so you will cut me off. But Heather, in the second paragraph, it talks about, "The district will protect students against retaliation for reporting incidents of aggressive behavior and bullying, and will take disciplinary action against any student who participates in such contact." How can the district guarantee that they can protect a child against retaliation of reporting incidents? How do you do that?
It's responding, as soon as we learn of a situation, we have an obligation to intervene.
I understand that, but I don't really think that we can say that we will 100% be able to protect a child from reporting something because that's impossible.
What, I'm sorry, what sentence were you on?
That's the second paragraph of the first page.
Second sentence.
Second sentence.
Of the second paragraph.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I understand that you will do your best, and obviously, that's the district's intention, but I remember when we reviewed this policy before and we said, "We will prevent bullying," and I got the word to change to deter because I would never set us up for...
So looking at the word protect.
Yeah. We will do every effort, you know? Then, I already asked that question. On page three of six, G, so after an investigation happens, I just want to know this, an investigation is performed, and, you know, whatever, there's, a decision has been made, guilty or not guilty, at what point are the parents involved in this? As spoken to, number one, are they told that this is the situation, that this has been the decision? Are they privy to how that decision was made and who made it and what the evidence is, so to speak? And three, what, what course of action do they have if they don't agree with the consequence?
Right. Now you're really getting into our practice versus policy, and we'd be happy to answer all those.
Okay, I'll talk to you right then, I guess, about that.
Any other questions or comments on these policies? Okay. Thank you. And that moves us to our second period for public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to come forward? And just as a reminder, please state your name and your community of residence, and you will have three minutes to speak because you did not speak in the first session.
Hi, I'm Beth Drucker, and I...
Oh, we need you to have the microphone and turn it on.
If I did not.
Not yet.
Hi, I'm Beth Drucker, and I'm a former District 39 parent, and I'm like the parent that never goes away. I continue to work with the district on both bike issues and sustainability issues. Wanted to thank you all for the leadership that you've all shown in this area. Putting the three goals in the strategic plan was a very important part of the process. I've enjoyed working with Katie Lee and Amanda Utnick and Lisa Winter, and we've made a lot of progress. I also wanted to let you all know that District 39 really is showing leadership and helping other school districts follow your lead. Three examples of that is Nutria High School has modeling their food composting program on District 39's after a visit here with Lisa Winter. They were supposed to start in the fall, but they're still just about to launch. District 65 PTO, the Evanston, Big Evanston District, has reached out to some of our PTO volunteers to say, "How are you making that progress? Teach us." And on February 7th... And on February 7th, Go Green Illinois Schools, which is an organization that represents people from 60 different schools, have been invited to District 39 to hear about how you've made progress on these goals. So I want to commend you for your focus on it and your progress. I know we've made really great progress on goal number two. Katie's been working very, very hard on it. I did just pull up the strategic plan, and I think it looks like we've got a little bit of work to do on goals one and three, and I look forward to continuing to hear about that progress. We also would love to see that, the sustainability plan that was done by Waldes Associates, which is so great that, that it's utilized, and also would like to say that in school districts, just like universities and corporations, what would be very helpful would be a person whose job it is to coordinate all the sustainability efforts across the district that would include things like energy use, waste and recycling, transportation, purchasing, outdoor classroom use, and curriculum integration. It's very hard to do this in a coordinated fashion when there isn't a person whose job depends on doing that really well. So that was what we recommended a few years ago, and I just wanted to say, we also think that would still be helpful now. We understand that budget constraints are the number-one concern with establishing a position like that. So with that, I want to thank you again for your, your focus, and also would like to thank Nicole Boomgarden, who's a District 39 parent, who is the head of all the environmental awareness representatives on the PTO, and she works very closely with Katie as well, and Lisa Winter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to make comments at this time? Great, thank you very much. So with that, we move on to our action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, which one?
I'd like item number five, please, the approve interim contracts for student services administrator and business manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
So noted. Any others? Okay, Mr. Panzicca, would you proceed with the motion?
I move to approve the personnel report dated January 22nd, 2018. I move to approve the 2019 fiscal year budget calendar and resolution. I move to approve the 2018-2019 District 39 school calendar. I move to approve the fiscal year 18 year-end audit services from the Financial Auditing Firm of Klein Hall CPAs for a fee not to exceed $25,500. I move to approve as first reading revised Board of Education policies 6:150, home and hospital instruction, 6:160, English language learners, 6:170, Title I programs, 6:180, summer school, 6:190, co-curricular clubs and activities, 6:200, emergency drills, 6:220, instructional materials, and 7:180, preventing bullying and other aggressive I move to approve the attached resolution prohibiting sexual harassment and revised policies 2:260, Uniform Grievance Procedure, and 5:20, workplace harassment prohibited. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between December 19, 2017, and January 22, 2018 in the following amounts. O and M fund, $266,763.64. Debt service fund, $120,830. Transportation fund, $150,0682, for a total all funds of $1,070,325.50. I move to approve the manual checks issued between December 19, 2017, and January 22, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $382,986.75. O and M fund, $6,233.18. Transportation fund, $187.39. Tort fund, $690, for a total all funds of $390,097.32.
Thank you, the motions have been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John says you're ready?
Approved.
Tracy, attorney?
Yes.
Frank Panzicca?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Please, attorney?
Yes.
Alister, one?
Yes.
Yes, the yeses have it, and the motion carries. With that, may I have a motion to approve the interim contracts for student services administrator, excuse me, administrator and business manager? Wow. Is that one? Number five, second.
I move to approve the 2018-2019 interim administrators' contracts for student services and business manager.
Motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do I have any discussion on the contracts or on the motion?
I'll just make a statement. I'm 100% supportive of who is being recommended for these positions. I honestly, personally couldn't think of better people. I don't agree with the terms of the contract.
Okay. Do you want to be any more specific, or that's where you would be?
Yeah, that we didn't get into really benefits, et cetera, in executive, whatever we call that session. We mostly talked about salary. And in reading in the contracts, I discovered we take care of 100% of their health benefits, their contributions, et cetera, vacation days, all that stuff. I'd like to be able to talk about that.
I just want to comment that the board approved this, and it can be reviewed again anytime, but this was just approved last year, and you were part of that discussion. And the administrators, like the teachers, have the same exact benefits with respect to health insurance. Is it 70 to?
It's right here, actually.
Right, you're right, but it mirrors all the employees, it mirrors the teachers.
I, under, okay, great, but I still don't agree with the terms of the contract. We didn't discuss this.
That's fine.
Okay, this time around. Thank you.
We understand that you don't agree, we got it. Any other comments on this?
I would agree with Ray. I mean, this is the contract that we're using standardly for all of our administrators. So this is, we've approved this contract all last year for all of our administrators. It's just the same thing.
Correct, but that we're talking about it now suggests that it's, we're approving this contract. Again, there's opportunity for discussion around it, so I just disagree with it.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John says you're ready?
Yes.
Tracy, attorney?
No.
Frank Panzicca?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
But Lisa, attorney?
Yes.
Alister, one?
Yes.
Yes, the yeses have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you, and that moves us on to conference items. Is there any old business? Seeing none, is there any new business? Do we have any good in welfare? Okay, thank you. Then may I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John says you're ready?
Yes.
Tracy, attorney?
Yes.
Frank Panzicca?
Yes.
Alyssa? Yes.
Please, attorney?
Yes.
Alister, one?
Yes.
Yes, the yeas have it, and we are adjourned to executive session. The time is 8:58. Yeah.